We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Steven?
Stevens?
Sorry, here.
Mayor Blad?
Here.
Thank you. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you would please remain standing for invocation, which will be offered by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it is indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into Agenda Item Number Three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes of the following meetings: City Council clarification and regular city council meetings of January 7, 2021, and January 21, 2021, and special council meeting of January 21, 2021. B. Payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider the payroll and material claims for the month of January 2021. Jim? Good evening. How are you? I would like to, before we get going too far, I'd like to introduce to you our new CFO, Jim Krueger. He's been here for about sixteen days, I think, is what we figured out. So he's an expert on all things city financial right now. So we're in good shape. And so as soon as Jim's ready, we'll go ahead and have him give us a report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. My report tonight is a real brief report, and I'm just going to highlight a few of the items that are on the report. Payroll for January 2021 is $3,781,690, and that is $104,732 less than January of 2020. The employee count for January 2021 is 534 full-time employees, and that is one less full-time employee than was the case in December of 2020. Part-time employees, we have 124 part-time employees on board as of January 2021, and that's one less part-time employee than we had in December of 2020. All total, we have 679 employees in the categories of full-time, half-time, part-time, seasonal, and elected employees, and that is two employees less than was the case in December of 2020. Total payroll and material claims, $6,186,644, of which $3,781,690 is payroll and vendor-related claims, $2,404,954. And just a couple of highlights, we have an item called Multiple Vendors on the list of items to be paid. $100,000 for amounts that were granted to small businesses in Pocatello. That's the first tier of those grant awards. The next tier will be in February. We have a payment of $543,159 for a water bond payment that was made. It was actually due on February 1st, but we made the payment in January, and that's for water bonds that were originally issued in 2008 and refunded in 2017. Those water bonds will mature in 2027. Utilities, by and large, the next items down below the Wells Fargo purchase card amount. Utility items are all, for the most part, except for Intermountain Gas, less than the previous month. We have Airport Seating Alliance, amount of $14,839, which represents 23 seats that were purchased out at the airport. And that's the extent of the report that I'm giving to you tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Council, any questions? Thank you, Jim, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
It is really nice to have a CFO with us today, so thank you. Agenda, we'll move on to Agenda Item C, is Animal Shelter Advisory Board reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Arlen Walker to continue serving on the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Arlen's term will begin February 18, 2021, and will expire February 18, 2023. D. Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Advisory Committee appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Steve Ernst to serve as a member of the CDBG Advisory Committee, filling a vacancy. Steve's term will begin February 5, 2021, and will expire January 1, 2024. E. Sister City Committee reappointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Kate Van Buskirk and Katie Cooper to continue serving on the Sister City Committee. Both terms will begin February 17, 2021, and will expire February 17, 2025. F. Council decision, Pocatello Courtyard short plat approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the short plat for Pocatello Courtyard, which divides approximately 5.62 acres of land located on 200th Block of Vista Drive into two lots, subject to conditions. G. Citizen donation acceptance for canine officer. Council may wish to accept a donation from the Jason Meter family in the amount of $10,000 for the purchase of a new canine to be used in the police department. This canine officer will replace canine officer Bart, who passed away during, due to a genetic heart abnormality while on duty.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Ortega?
Could you please, I'd like to remove Item G from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Agenda Item Number Three, Items A through F, and thank Jason Meter for the donation of the $10,000 for the canine dog. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Number Three, A through F. Wendy, could you please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion made by Cheatham and seconded by Lurick.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Council, you have Agenda Item G to consider.
Well, I'd like some details. I mean, I don't have any information on this. Is $10,000 enough to buy a dog? What kind of dog? Is it a dual-purpose dog? Is it a, what, you know, I'd like to know what the terms of, is this just a flat-out donation, and then the city owns the dog? Is there going to be any more investment?
Okay. We have Captain Kelly on the, in the meeting. Captain Kelly?
Yes. In speaking with the Meter family and Jason, you can maybe pipe in here just in a little bit, but they have graciously approached us to see if they could purchase this dog. And it's not just $10,000. They said if it's over that, they would cover that cost. What we found with a dual-purpose dog, a green dog, as we call it, that needs to go through the training with the handler, it is approximately $10,000 through the certified kennels. And there is a kennel in Utah that we're looking now, and they're typically either a German or Dutch Shepherd, a Belgian Malinois, that, those type of dogs. And it would be a dual-purpose patrol dog and drug-detection dog. And all the training, we have the expertise in-house to provide the training to get the handler and the dog up to speed, so there will be no extra cost regarding the training. And we do have the infrastructure, the vehicle, the handler, all of that's already there. All we need to do is replace the dog and get them training. So, and as far as strings, they just want to help us out and buy the dog, and it will be, it will belong to the City of Pocatello Police Department.
So, first of all, Mr. Meter, thank you. It's such a generous offer. I'm always, I'm always grateful when people just are generous. It is really, really a wonderful thing. So Captain Kelly, the dog would be trained already, right?
There's a certain level of training they come with, but then they will have to be paired with the handler to be certified.
Okay.
And that takes some, you know, amount of training with the handler to refine that training and get them working together as they should.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Linda, and then Chris.
And I also want to thank you, Mr. Meter. That's very generous, and we really appreciate it. And my question is really just out of curiosity, is Officer Lacy going to be working, partnering with this dog, or will it be someone else?
It will be Officer, or Corporal Lacy. And that was something that we determined through our internal processes, that that would be the best way to move forward.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yeah. So what would the associated costs be, even though the training takes place in-house? I'm assuming that that training time for Corporal Lacy, would that come out of his regular shifts? Or would we be paying, you know, overtime for the additional time that would be needed for him to train with the dog?
It would come out of his regular shifts. Also, we have a training period built in to the canine officer's schedule, and they have training on Mondays. And then every third Thursday of the month is a 10-hour training day that's already built in, and they will utilize all of that, plus his regular duty time to complete that training.
You're, Captain Kelly, you're cutting out on us.
Speed.
So I'm just going to go ahead and answer for him. This is going to happen during his regular scheduled times that Captain Kelly will be here. They do trainings a couple of times a week, and he'll just continue to do the same kind of trainings and stuff that he had with the dog he had before.
Okay, and then I just want to, on top of everybody else's thanks, Mr. Meter, thank you to you and your family, and I'm sure quite a part.
I apologize.
Quite a part.
What did you?
Quite a.
So.
Anyway, I'm sure it will also help heal Corporal Lacy's heart, in addition to the monetary benefit to the city, and so I thank you for that as well.
So Council President Adamson, you had?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move that we accept the donation from the Meter family, and again, just reiterate our thanks and express our appreciation for this donation.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Cheatham, and I want to just tell Jason how grateful we are as well for the generous donations and the great family that you've been in our community. It's a staple, and we appreciate everything the Meters have done. So Jason, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now with that, a motion by Adamson and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray, or Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four. Jason, thank you again. Appreciate you and your family. Thank you.
You're welcome. Before we move on, would Jason like to say something?
Uh.
Look at us.
I, we're just glad that we were able to help with this. I've known Keela for about seventeen years, very long time, and our family, being a dog family, we certainly know what it's like to lose a dog, and we're just extremely happy that we are able to help and be a part of this, and just be able to help the city any way we can.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we will move on then to Agenda Item Four. This is the calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On February 11 at 9:00 a.m. is a city council work session. February 18 at 2:00 p.m. is a city council liaison work session clarification meeting. February 18 at 5:30 p.m. will be a council clarification meeting, and February 18 at 6:00 p.m. will be a regular city council meeting. I might add, the governor's moved us out of Stage Two into Stage Three, so all of those meetings will be in person at City Hall. And so the council, if you can remember to do that and be here, that'd be fantastic. Other events, February 15, city offices will be closed for President's Day. However, garbage and recycle pickups will remain on schedule. As a reminder, face coverings are required when individuals are in public places within the City of Pocatello. As a reminder, to please keep sidewalks clear of snow and ice. When clearing sidewalks and driveways of snow, please do not place the snow in the streets. It becomes a driving hazard. And that is a public announcement. If we end up with any snow this year, we'll see if that happens. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, is a public hearing, final plat to the ridges at Trail Creek. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by McCormick Ranch LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, for a final plat application to subdivide approximately 30.22 acres into 16 residential lots. The proposed subdivision is located along Foothill Boulevard and North Gaethy Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat application with conditions following a public hearing on August 26, 2020. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. The public hearing was requested by Linda Polka and Ralph Hackard. The public hearing request was approved by council at the regular city council meeting on January 7, 2021. So with that, I declare the public hearing open. Council, this is a land use appeal, so I need to ask if there's been any ex parte communication. Okay, then I would turn the time over to the applicant, which is Brady. Who are we? Brady, or you're it?
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay.
Yep, we can.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Brady Smith, Rocky Mountain Engineering, 600 East Oak Street in Pocatello, Idaho, here tonight, representing the applicant on this project, which we are referring to as the Ridges at Trail Creek. As many of you are aware, we've been before you at other times with regards to the PUD that actually will sit within the large lot that will be dedicated in this particular final plat, Lot Six. That just recently received approval, and we're working towards advancing that to the next stage of the preliminary plat, so we're excited about that. Just a brief recap, this property was previously owned by the Holy Spirit Catholic Church, and was developed out to quite a great degree in that it developed the pad in which the church was going to, you know, put their building, as well as the roadway network up to it, along with the underground utility infrastructure. It got to the point where they were about finished, and then, for whatever the reason, things kind of fell apart, and they decided to go a different direction. And so those improvements were actually never officially accepted by the city, and the plat was never recorded. The development group that we represent came in and purchased that land, and that is the plat that's before you tonight. It represents their vision of how they would like to see this piece of property develop out. And it is a little bit different than what was previously planned by the church, but we still met all the requirements that the code set forth, and we have, you know, been able to provide the necessary, you know, access points that will be needed moving forward to, you know, meet the ordinance. We have had some discussion in the past meetings about a secondary access, and I wanted to kind of bring you guys up to speed on the developments there. Our development group has actually reached an agreement in principle with the landowners that we need to be able to push that through, and right now, it's just currently waiting on some banking clearances to kind of get finalized, and that should be a done deal. So we're excited about that as well, to be able to provide a route where that secondary gravel access could be pushed through. Previous to this, we did not have the amount of land secured in order to provide that connectivity, and so that's something that has progressed since the last time that we were before you. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about some of the concerns that I know will be probably coming up in the testimonies to follow, but one of the things that you will notice on our plat is that we have an easement that is defined on, between Lots Four and Five of Block Two. That is where there is currently an existing sewer line and a water line that actually stubs to the south. We have housed that within an easement that will still be granted to the city for maintenance and operation of that system, or those system improvements. We are also planning on providing a pedestrian access on the western boundary line of what is considered Lot 10, Block Two of the plat in your packet. That will be a pedestrian accessway to connect into that southerly piece, and we also have a plan to provide a roadway access, which is defined on, I believe there's a concept map in your packet. Can't remember the exact name on it, but basically, there's a concept map that shows the adjacent layout that we have next to this piece that's currently before you tonight, and how that's going to head, you know, south, and ultimately will connect into the Trail Creek subdivision. So we feel like that is a good plan of attack moving forward, and we think it will be beneficial for all the parties around that area. Our hope tonight is that you would recommend approval for this project, or not recommend, but to actually approve this project, and we know that it meets the ordinance. We have looked over the conditions that were set forth by the city staff in the report, and we have no issues with those conditions, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I also want to let you know that we do have our legal counsel here, Patrick Davis. He's actually probably in the audience with the mayor tonight, that can answer any legal questions that I might not be able to.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we have a question by Councilwoman Stevens.
Actually, it's just a thank you. I had concerns about the secondary access, and I really appreciate that you and your team, you know, dealt with that, got on top of it so quickly. So thank you very much for that. Much appreciated.
Okay, Councilman Bray, do you have a question?
The question I have is that, would it be something you would be amenable to, to add as another condition, that you actuate the secondary access? I don't see that listed here, but if you're negotiating it, could we just list that as another condition?
What do you say, "actuate"? What do you?
Well, we're talking maybe and might. We think we've got it coming. We've got this. Can we get that as a condition that you have to provide a secondary access?
Brian, do you want to chime in on this? I'm not sure that I know what your guys' position would be, not being in those discussions, or maybe Patrick could answer that.
Yeah, I think what you're asking, Roger, is can we make the secondary access a condition upon this approval? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I would, again, I wish that was up to us, but we were forced to deal with what the city and the fire marshal requires, and that's why before, he gave us the option of fire sprinkle or either the secondary access. And we would have to do both or either one, so it'd really be up to him on what we'd have to do there, because we agreed in the past. Or sprinkle.
So your feeling is, is with the condition of sprinkling, the secondary access is a tangential issue right now?
Well, according to the fire code, the way I understand it from the fire chief, is we had to do either or. So we had agreed to do the fire sprinkle system, but is still our plan to run the, an access road over to Trail Creek Development, which we also own, so we can develop that property.
Okay.
Any other questions for either Brady or Brian? Okay, super. Thank you. Then staff?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Carl Anderson, City of Pocatello, Senior Planner, for the record. You have before you for consideration the final plat, the Ridges at Trail Creek subdivision. This request has been submitted by McCormick Ranch LLC. The engineer representing the applicant is Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying. The proposed subdivision is located along Foothill Boulevard and North Gaethy Drive. The proposal calls for the plating of 30.222 acres, more or less, into 16 lots in a zone residential, commercial, professional. The RCP zoning district requires a minimum lot size of 4,200 square feet for a single-family home, and the smallest buildable lot is 8,712 square feet. As proposed and previously stated, Lot Six, Block One incorporates land area that was approved for a planning unit development. This lot will require preliminary and final plat, and will be replat should the applicant proceed with the planning and development. Based on the slope analysis submitted, the area to remain undisturbed shall be shown on a plat and delineated with a building restriction line. This boundary line should be shown on the plat and stake prior to beginning of construction. As a condition of the preliminary plat, it was required that the applicant work with staff and the adjacent property owner to the south to verify access to the property prior to final plat's middle. The applicant has provided an exhibit located in Attachment D, showing the future plans for access to this site. The City's Public Works Department has reviewed this and requires that this access be established by an easement for emergency access and access to the 40-acre parcel located south of the development, which will terminate upon the dedication of a permanent right-of-way. A public hearing request was approved by the city council on January 7. All noticing requirements for this public hearing have been met. The written comment received as part of the public hearing request have been included in the agenda packet for your review. No additional written comment has been received in regards to this subdivision. We have received a few calls on the application. Staff has reviewed the application and finds the proposed Ridges at Trail Creek subdivision is compliant with all applicable standards of City Code 16.24, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat with conditions following their public meeting on August 26, 2020. That's a brief summary from staff. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions, council? Any questions, council? Thank you. And Carl, you said we did not have any other correspondence for this public hearing?
Not, not for the subdivision. We received comments on the planning and development that were provided with that application.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, did we receive any in the, your office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony in support of the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Okay, if you're uncommitted?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Uncommitted? Ma'am, are you uncommitted? Then you could come on up here to this microphone and... Well, I was wondering if you're, I was just going to ask if it was for opposition of the application or uncommitted to it?
I don't know. I don't think it's, we're not in opposition, but we have some conditions that we're requesting.
So why don't we go ahead and split you up? Why don't you go ahead and go, I'm committed and you go to opposition? If you're okay with that?
At the present time, I'm opposed.
Okay. Absolutely, ma'am. You can step up to the microphone. And if you would just state your name and where you're from.
My name is Linda Papelka and I live at two thirty-eight Oakwood Drive here in Pocatello. And I'd like to thank you for taking the time to hear us today. We are in favor of good development in our neighborhood. And we're not here to, with the intention to harm the developers or anyone else. In fact, we have been cooperative with the developers. We met with them multiple times in two thousand and eighteen and signed an agreement to work with them on their connector road, which came up tonight. If this plat is approved as it stands, we will experience harm. We own thirty-eight acres next to the ridges at Trail Creek. The majority of our land is not developable due to the steep ravines. Within our thirty-eight acres, we have a fifteen acre parcel of bench ground that is developable. But it's not accessible from Foothill Boulevard due to the steep terrain. It can only be accessed from Gathie Drive Extension, which is within this plat. This plat intends to remove our access to that fifteen acre piece of ground. The issue is that the city required the previous developer, the Catholic Church, to construct a ninety foot street stub with pavement, sidewalk, curb and gutter to our property. We can provide copies of those documents if the city wishes to see them. This was required to prevent use of a control strip, which would prevent development, our development. The idea that this is private property and that McCormick Ranch can do what they want is not quite accurate. The city has tremendous reach into private property rights. For example, our land is in the county and we cannot divide our thirty-eight acres into two or three parcels without first annexing into the city. It is the city who determines how land is used and how development proceeds. And it was the city who required the previous developer to construct the ninety foot city street stub to our property boundary. The developers have proposed a future non-flatted access on the west side of our land. There is no road there. That's where the connector road would be. As we have learned through this process, there's no guarantee that we will have access in the future if it is not platted and dedicated to the city. Due to the pandemic, there could be an economic slowdown. They might sell their land. It could be five, ten, twenty years before the land to the west of us is developed. We had our land for sale, but pulled the listing because of the access issues. The question is, why would the city require the previous developer to plan and construct an access road to our property boundary and then allow a second developer who purchased the same exact ground to remove that access? I hope the city will recognize the harm that will come to us if we do not have access in this plat. We hope that the city will consider the inconsistencies between the two developers. And we trust the city to come to an agreement that is fair to all parties. We really appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others uncommitted to the application? We're going to weigh that one more to oppose, by the way, just so you know. Any testimony opposed to the application?
Hi, my name is Ralph Heckard and I reside here in Pocatello and I am an adjacent property owner to the development. And I'm opposed because on August twenty-sixth of twenty twenty, the Pocatello Planning and Zoning reviewed and approved the preliminary application or preliminary plat for the ridges at Trail Creek with five conditions. And condition number five was the applicant shall work with the staff and the adjacent property owner to the south to verify access to the property prior to final plat submission. We had one contact with the developer and the developer's attorney following that within a month of that, of that requirement. And it was a fruitless interaction. We were informed that they had no obligation to anything or to us other than to their investors. Now, with that said, six months have now gone by and we still don't have any verified access to our property. It was clear to me after the one contact with the investors regarding condition five, that I had hoped would be a working meeting, that I am completely powerless to compel the developers to do anything. I'm here tonight because you are the entity that can ensure that the prior condition of verified access is met prior to approval of the final plat. If you approve this final plat absent any verified access, then the most significant portion of our land will effectively be rendered inaccessible and of no value and useless. And I thought we were supposed to be developing ground based on a common use principles, which is I think why the church complied with the city ten years ago in constructing the, the stub that Linda referred to. Consequently, until such time that it's included with the final plat, I request that you not approve the final plat and that the approval occur only after we have received some verification in writing that we will have access to that ground. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then we would give Brady an opportunity to respond to some of those questions.
Mr. Mayor, if it's all right with you and the council, I'd like to turn the time over to Patrick Davis, who is a little more intimately involved in the legality side of this and maybe can shed some light on the concerns that were brought up between us last time.
He is already standing up waiting to go.
Okay. So, I mean, it's, it's possible that we're just ships passing in the night as far as what's actually going to happen with this, with this plat. The, so there's been a lot of reference to what the church did and what the city required. We don't know any of that. What we know is that was a different plan. That wasn't our plan. It's, it's not how they planned to use, not how McCormick planned to use the property. That was somebody else's plan that never became a dedicated roadway to the city. However, there are those utility stubs there and those are always going to remain there. Nobody's taking them out. Nobody's doing anything like that. And the plan has always been to create the access that is in attachment D. You can see on, let's see. One, two, three, four, five, on page five of attachment D, that rendering from Rocky Mountain. You can see there that the access, that the plan is to bring that access around from the west. That has always been the plan. Now, previously, and Brady alluded to this, previously we had, there are other landowners involved on that side of things. And things weren't as far along. And so this was a little bit more speculative. But we, we have a deal done in principle. Our papers have been signed. Everything's been submitted. The landowner on the other side has a creditor that we have also met with and has at least said they're all in favor of everything that we're trying to do. And so as far as we know, it's a matter of them writing their names on the piece of paper. We've already done that. We don't have any reason to believe that this, this access from the west isn't going to happen. And as far as, I mean, i- it's a little bit frustrating to hear that we didn't communicate because I know that we've all jumped on the phone with, with Mr. Heckard and Ms. Papelka a couple of times. We had a Zoom meeting with them and their attorney, Reed Larson. So it's, it's not as though we weren't trying to get this across. And, and again, maybe we were just ships passing in the night. I know their concern is that the access from the west is speculative. And I guess that that's, that's, that's true of just about any development or any plan or any contract that there is some speculation involved until everything's been performed. But as I said, we, according to the plan that McCormick Ranch has had, it has always been the plan to build that road up through the west side of the property and then connect over on the other side. We have other moving parts involved that have stopped moving as much. We have most of that tied down and should have all of it tied down really probably within thirty days. But at any rate, the plan has always been to provide that access from the west. That is still the plan. And, and that's still what McCormick is, is going to do. And so beyond that, obviously, we're subject to the fire chief saying something different at some point saying that. But as far as our plan, as far as McCormick's plan, it has always been to provide that access from the west. And that is still the plan.
Okay, council, any questions for Patrick while he's up? Looks like Councilwoman Stevens.
Yes, so just in, very straightforwardly, because I'm not an expert, a legal expert in these matters. Do the, the folks that own the thirty-eight acres have any legally enforceable assurance that they will not be cut off? And at this point in time, can they be one hundred percent sure they are on solid legal ground that their land will not end up being isolated and inaccessible?
Well, I mean, as far as, you know, being an attorney, you know, I don't ever want to give someone other than my client legal advice or state a legal conclusion. However, that, that is the plan. That's always been the plan.
But the answer is no.
No, well, I mean, the answer is that I'm not give them, give them a legal opinion.
Right, no, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking for a legal opinion. I'm just saying that right now, what I'm hearing is that you have a plan, but they have no assurance. And so that means the answer to the question I ask is effectively no. So, great, thanks.
So Councilwoman, it looks like Brian Ball actually has raised his hand. He wants to maybe answer that question.
Yeah, and just to answer that question for you, Councilman Stevens. And we, we've met with staff, we've met with Merrill and the city. As per the city's code, we have to provide that. We have identified that ground to the west. We cannot put it in a legal description until we file a final plat with you guys and you approve it. But we have told the staff that we're more than happy to put as legal as possible of a easement that gives everybody the comfort that it will go in, in that area. But it may shift twenty or thirty feet one way or the other, depending on a final plat, if that helps.
Right.
Okay, it looks like Council President Adamson had a question. And then I think Roger or Councilman Bray, you took your microphone off. But did you have a question as well? Okay, Council President. Okay.
Okay, so I can certainly appreciate the concerns. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the landowners for coming in and talking to us. And I had a lot of questions about this as well. And so I spoke with the city staff to try and understand a little bit better. And so I think my question is for Carl or maybe Merrill, since I see that Merrill's got his camera on. When I was talking to staff earlier this week, my understanding is that actually, even though it has been stated that there is no access from Foothill, there is access from Foothill, it's just not ideal because it's a much steeper grade. And so that would be a more expensive street to get up onto the developable acreage, probably requiring retaining walls or, you know, things like that. So hopefully staff can help clear that up a little bit as well.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Adamson. That is correct. The access is available along Foothill. It is steep as the property owners to the south have indicated. So any access up to the bench, which, and looking at is probably the most developable portion of that property or easily developable, I should say, would require a roadway to get up there if no access from the existing roadway is provided. As previously mentioned by the property owner, the applicant, Brian Ball, part of our city code requirement is to provide for a connected transportation system in addition to required, in, in addition to fire's requirement for secondary access when more than thirty units are provided. So that's why you're seeing that condition there on the subdivision plat, that the applicant worked with staff and the adjacent property owner to verify that access. So we want to see that that secondary, that access from above is also provided in order to provide for a connected transportation system. You'll see there in Public Works notes, it's on their plat, I think it's I. Can't read my handwriting. It's either an I or a J. That secondary access, that that actually be dedicated as an easement for access to their property in addition to emergency access. And when a roadway is platted, then that easement would go away and would be a platted roadway, providing that access from an alternative location.
Okay, did that answer your question, Council President Adamson? Okay. Any other questions, council? Councilwoman Stevens?
Yeah, Merrill, is what, what would the harm be? Or Carl, what would the harm be? Because it sounds as though part of this is we're waiting on the fire marshal or whomever. So what would be the, the intrinsic harm in getting all of that straightened out before bringing this in front of us?
Councilwoman Stevens, if I could answer that. First, it's already before you. This is the, this is the, the plat that is before you now. Second is, is that, like I said, and, and Carl pointed out, in condition J of my memo, we are requiring an easement be put in place that's going to be temporary in nature at this time until the plat comes forward for the extension of these roadways so that they could be dedicated to the city and that it would be dedicated right away to the west side of the, the thirty-eight acres. The part to that is, is we are asking and the developers have said yes, to my understanding, that they would provide across the property that they already own and control that temporary access. And the reason it's a temporary in nature is that, as Mr. Ball has stated, that that access could shift, you know, across there on that west side, depending on how the lots and, and a few of the other things come forward. But we're asking for that to happen at the time of the recording of the plat, which would already ensure that there's an easement to that side. Now, the roadway, as it states in some of the other conditions we have, the working with the fire department is that this is the first step. We'll get the easement in and start moving forward. By the time there's thirty lots that are livable, that there has to be that gravelled way for secondary access at a minimum or the, all the structures will be sprinkled. So that's up to the developers to make that decision and, and how they're going to proceed that way.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Ortega.
So, so Merrill, since, since you've, you've requested that easement and, and does, so then it's already part of this plat, right? The easement? So these people have an assurance of access. Is, is that, am I understanding correctly?
Yes, it's an offset, it's an offsite easement. So it's not actually part of the plat, but we're asking for it to be
So it's not actually part of the plat, but we're asking for it to be a condition of the plat, that there's that temporary easement as laid out in, I think Patrick said it was that page five.
Right.
That, that's there. And that will give that easement an assurance because that easement's in place.
Okay.
Until the right away is platted.
Okay.
Improved right away, but as, as they progress with their development, it'll be gravelled and so forth.
Right.
Moving forward.
But, but so, so really, their concern about getting some sort of guarantee of access is already in place because you're already telling, you're already, there's an easement?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? I've got Patrick still standing. Okay, see you none. Thank you, thank you very much. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel these items before you, how do you wish to proceed? Council President Adamson.
Mayor, I move that we approve the plat applications since the condition is noted.
Second.
So we have a motion by Adamson, and I believe Cheatham got the second. I think it was a close race. So a motion by Adamson and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being with us tonight. And we'll move on to agenda item number six, is the public hearing, annexation of property located at 6715 South Fifth Avenue. This time it's been set aside for council, for the council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Willie Bjorn, represented by Connect Engineering, to annex and zone approximately 5.79, 5.97 acres of land in, at 6715 South Fifth Avenue. The requested zoning for the property is light industrial LI with a comprehensive plan designation of employment E. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the proposal, or proposed changes following a public hearing on January 13, 2021. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards and conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Counsel, has there been any expertise, communication? Okay, then I would call the applicants.
Yes, this is Barry Bain with Connect Engineering, 1150 Holly Park Drive in Idaho Falls. So this, this annexation and initial zoning, as you can see, is a piece of property that's about six acres down on the, the south end of town. It's, you're, you're familiar with the old Jack's Tire building. That's, that's what it is, is that building right now. The plan is to, to renovate and, and add on and, and make it look better and add some additional features to it. So tonight, we're seeking the zone of light industrial as, as we feel that in our conversations with staff, that that fits the need that, that it'll be used for and it fits the area down there. This property is contiguous to the city right now. And I believe that the surround, the current surrounding zones are light industrial and I believe commercial, staff might have to correct me if I'm wrong, commercial, general commercial, I believe. So we're here seeking approval of this annexation and, and initial zoning. And I'll, I'll stand for any questions if there are any.
Counsel, any questions for Barry right now? There may be some in the future, Barry, hang on, think tight there. Staff, looks like Matthew.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. As noted, Willie Bjorn, represented by Connect Engineering, has submitted an application to annex and zone property addressed at 6715 South Fifth Avenue. The requested zoning for the property is light industrial with a comprehensive plan designation on employment. The subject property is within the adopted area of city impact and lies contiguous to the City of Pocatello corporate boundary at the southern and easternmost property line. The property has been home to Jack's Tire and Oil for many years and is now home to Peterbilt. Land uses adjacent to and near the site include but are not limited to the FedEx Distribution Center, various warehouses and repair shops. City sewer and water is available. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the land to be annexed have been provided notice of the public hearing. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal and a sign was posted onsite. No written comments have been received. Following a public hearing held on January the 13th, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommends approval of the application from Willie Bjorn, representing Peterbilt, to annex the 5.97 acre parcel with conditions as outlined and defined as a fact and recommendation. This concludes my presentation, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Matt? Matt, you mentioned we hadn't seen, you hadn't received any other communication.
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, have we received any in your office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, we'll move to any testimony supporting the application? Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application? All right, well, Barry, you lucked out. It doesn't look like there's any questions unless the counsel has anything for you.
Yeah, this is probably the easiest annexation and initial zoning that we've had, so I appreciate it.
Well, it's not over yet, so hold your breath. I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel these items before you, how do you wish to proceed? Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of agenda item number six, the annexation of property located at 6715 South Fifth Avenue in Pocatello and the rezoning to light industrial with the standards and conditions as proposed by staff.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Bray. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item seven, 2021 Water Department material bids. Council may wish to consider bids received on January 19, 2021 for materials used by the Water Department for capital improvement projects, maintenance and replenish materials inventory. The bid was separated into 13 separate lots in an effort to guarantee the lowest price for the city. Staff request the council award each lot to the lowest responsive bidder as follows. A, Corin Maine, lots one, three, five, and 10, for $398,602.64. B, Mountain Land Supply, lot four, for $74,312.44. C, Ferguson Water Works, lot six, lots two, six, seven, eight, nine, 12, and 13, for a total of $129,270. And D, HD Flower Company, lot 11, for $13,343.90. The total cost of material bids is $615,528.98. Funds are available in the Water Department fiscal year 2021 budget. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Water Department material bids, awarding them to the lowest responsive bidder as in, as the lots are outlined in our agenda.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, the wording for agenda item eight has changed, so it goes as follows. Grant application 2020 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Application. Council may wish to approve the following grant application for the 2020 Assistance to Firefighters Grant, AFG. And if awarded, approve acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature in all applicable documents subject to legal, legal department review. The grants are as follows. A, a project in the amount of $142,347 for the purchase of one wildland engine. Grant funds will cover $128,112.30 and requires a 10% city match in the amount of $14,234.70 and is available in capital contingency funds. The wildland engine would replace aging and unsafe equipment, which has exceeded its useful life. And B, a project in the amount of $54,827.67 for the purchase of extracation equipment. Grant funds will cover $49,344.90 and require a 10% city match in the amount of $5,482.77 and is available in the capital contingency funds. The equipment would replace outdated equipment and provide needed equipment for each of the four staff fire, fire engines. Wildland engine and extrac, extrac, extracation equipment have been deemed high priority capital needs by the federal grant priority. That was a mouthful. Councilmember Bray?
Mayor, I move that we approve these grant applications and that we authorize your signature on all applicable documents subject to legal review.
Second.
We have a second by, was that Lurick?
Yeah.
So we have a, a motion by Bray and a second by Lurick, and I have two people waving at me. So Council President Adamson and then Councilwoman Ortega.
I'm curious if you would be okay with specifying that the matching funds come from existing fire department funds and not out of capital contingency.
I agree with that. That's what I was going to suggest.
I agree as well.
Is that, is that a substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have, we have a substitute motion by President Adamson and a second by Stevens. Any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion by Adamson and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Super, thank you very much. We'll move to agenda item nine. Is a piggyback bid, police department vehicle purchase. Council may wish to consider a piggyback bid on the City of Boise, Boise contract for the purchase of three vehicles to replace aging, high mileage patrol vehicles in the police department. The vehicles to be purchased are one 2020 Ford Expedition for $39,590 and one 2021 Ford Explorer Hybrid for $39,122 and one 2021 Dodge Charger for $31,238 for a total cost of $109,950. Funds for the purchase are available within the fiscal year 2021 police department budget.
Mr. Mayor? Me?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, didn't hear you. I move that we approve agenda item number nine, the piggyback bid for the police department vehicle purchase for three vehicles to replace aging, high mileage patrol vehicles in the police department for the amount specified. And does that require signatures?
It will.
No, it doesn't say that. Okay, but the mayor's signature on any applicable document, document.
Second.
Okay, and was that second Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
Question, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
In the preliminary meeting, I don't think we were able to process this all the way through. We were told that we need to replace three vehicles every year, but I think we have so many vehicles that we've got to replace more than three.
So I got Captain Kelly's on the line, but he was cutting in and out.
Okay.
I have Chief Guy in here, I don't know who would like.
I'm off video now, I should be.
Okay, and I have a, a secondary question.
Okay.
We're, we're purchasing three distinct vehicles, and I'm wondering where our uniformity of purchasing for a scale of efficiency is being considered as well?
Captain Kelly?
Okay, as, as far as that question goes, we have, we are replacing like vehicles in the fleet. So the particular vehicles that we are replacing are similar to, one is, is a sergeant's vehicle, which is the Expedition, and they're required to carry more equipment and to utilize their vehicles as mobile command centers, maybe more than the average officer. The, the sedan is to replace a sedan that we have, and we have, we have toruses, but they're no longer available. So we, we went to the next available sedan, and the Explorer is replacing an Explorer with the capacity and everything that that has. As far as the replacement schedule, we, we've worked out a schedule with Fleet to replace three vehicles during the period where, each year where, during the period where we have the, the lease payments for the, the pickups that we just purchased. So for the next three years, it's three, and then we will increase that once those other monies are unencumbered to get on the schedule to replace six at a time, you know, to be able to turn the fleet over and, and efficiently take care of that. And, and we've worked with Fleet to, to work out the schedule, and they're helping us select the highest mileage and highest maintenance cost vehicles that we have in the fleet to, to rotate those out on a yearly basis. So, so we're keeping close tabs on it, but we're just trying to keep it within our budgeted funds each, each year so we don't have to, to try to, to make a, a big purchase, you know, use and use other than what's budgeted. So that's the plan, to, to keep it within our budgeted funds. But then, once that money, like I said, is unencumbered, then we will increase that number to be able to get, get on that schedule.
Okay, Councilmember Cheatham?
Captain Kelly, I'm wondering if local dealers were given an opportunity to bid on this fleet bid as well as looking at the, the piggyback bid out of the City of Boise contract?
They, they are, we will, we check with them, but we, we typically will go with the state bid. And actually, this piggyback bid through Boise is, is a better, is lower price than even what the state bid was. So the, the low, the local dealers, if they don't have this state bid, then, then they're, they're not able to, to match those, those prices. And, and we've given them that, that opportunity, and they, they did for a couple of years, and they told us they, they could no longer meet those prices if they didn't have the state bid because there is some incentive that goes along with that that helps them out. And so we, and, and again, we worked with Fleet in order to get these costs, and they're the ones that checked the state bid price plus the, the Boise city bid.
So they didn't actually have an opportunity in the case of these three vehicles to bid this contract?
Um, I don't, I don't know that they did, they have in the past, but, you know, they're, we typically will go with the state bid, but this was lower than that, than the state bid.
It disappoints me where we see a Ford dealer tonight donate $10,000 to the police department for a dog. for a dog and not have an opportunity to bid on these vehicles.
Okay, thank you. We've got a question by councilwoman Ortega and then councilwoman Stevens.
Captain Kelly, are these vehicles all coming fully geared up?
No, these are just the purchase of the vehicle, and then the, the equipment and the upfitting is, comes out of another budget line item. So that's just the cost for the, for the vehicle. And then through our fleet budget, they do the upfitting and add the equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes, two things. One, when we talked about the police fleet rollover last year, and we, when we were talking about the purchase of the vehicles that we, that we already, the pickups and so forth, there was discussion around the fact that with the purchase of the five new vehicles, it would lessen the wear and tear on vehicles and that there was at least, it was worth exploring whether or not the mileage on each existing vehicle could be increased before it had to be rolled over. And I, you know, I still have that question. I didn't hear that addressed this evening. I'm just kind of wondering what's been done with that and where that is. And it's not necessary perhaps to deal with that tonight, but certainly I'm going to be interested in that as we go into budgeting for next year. And the other thing is that I'm going to be interested in goes to Rick's point, which is I'm going to want clarification around exactly how this vehicle bidding works to ensure that, that we've done, the city, we have done everything on our end that we can do to give, you know, equitable opportunity to local, to local dealers. Those are just two things that are important to me, and it's just more of a heads up rather than a a comment about the particular vote this evening.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and, and we don't have a problem putting that out. It's just typically the state bid price. It's very difficult for your typical dealership to meet that price unless they have that state bid, because there is some incentive. But I, again, I have no problem giving them that opportunity in the future.
And we can have it. Councilwoman?
Personally, I, I think that, that whether they can meet the price or not is irrelevant, but the opportunity should be afforded. And then, you know, if they can't meet it, they can't meet it, but, you know, you never know. And I think that just as a sign of respect, they should be afforded the opportunity to bid going forward.
Understood.
Any other questions, council? Okay, with that, we have a motion by Lurik and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham, I forgot.
Yes.
He's easy to forget. Okay, we'll move to agenda item 10, an ordinance amending title 17 zoning regulations specifically by amending chapter 1701, general provisions 1702, land discussions 1703, zoning districts 1704, overlay areas 1705, development standards 1706, special use standards to correct errors and inconsistencies and improve the function of this title. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilman Cheatham and then Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for the ordinance agenda item number 10 be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Thank you. Jared, or Jared, would you, oh, Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Ortega? Ortega?
She is muted and may have stepped away.
Stevens?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending sections of title 17 zoning regulations of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, more particularly by amending chapter 17.01, general provisions, chapter 17.02, land use decisions, chapter 17.03, zoning districts, chapter 17.04, overlay areas, chapter 17.05, development standards, and chapter 17.06, special use standards, for the purpose of correcting errors and inconsistencies and improving the function of this title and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass? Wendy?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item 11. Council discussion regarding ordinance number 3061 face coverings. This time has been set aside for council to revisit ordinance number 3061, an ordinance establishing standards for face coverings for individuals when they are in public places as approved by the council November 19, 2020, effective November 21, 2020. Councilmember Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I've been carefully analyzing COVID-19 data from the Southeast Idaho Health Department and the State Health Department, and it appears to me that cases of COVID-19 peaked in early December. They've been on a general downward trend both here and statewide since that time. A primary reason for the general concern about mask mandates was to avoid overwhelming our hospitals and assure they had capacity to handle not only COVID-19 cases, but also general health issues. As of yesterday, Port of Medical Center had two intensive care unit beds occupied. Pocatello represents about one-third of the population in the eight counties represented in the Southeast Idaho Public Health District. Manic County represents about half of that population. As of today's data on the Southeast Idaho Public Health website, less than 300 persons are counted as confirmed or probable cases of COVID-19. That's less than 300 out of about 180,000 persons, or less than two tenths of 1% of the population. We're all concerned about the death rate attributed to this virus. I'm sure we wish no one ever died, but when I look at the reported deaths and their ages, nearly all of them are seniors who are certainly more vulnerable to any virus, germ, or accident they might suffer, and I am one of those. I'm saddened when I hear of the death of a 60, or 70, or 80, or 90, or 100-year-old resident, but I'm not surprised. COVID-related or not, I'd like to see a comparison of those deaths in these age brackets over the past five years. I doubt we'd see much of a blip. I'm one of those seniors, and when I'm in an environment that prevents comfortable distancing, I'm going to continue to wear a mask. That's my choice. I know that I'm beginning to see less masks in Pocatello stores. People are tired of this requirement and the constant reminder of the infection rate and death rate. Businesses are no longer enforcing their own mask policies. Infections of the COVID-19 virus will not end when everyone that wants a vaccine is inoculated, just like we continue to have influenza cases and flu shots each year to moderate the various new strains that develop. COVID-19 is here to stay, and the world needs to learn to take personal responsibility and cope with it. I see about a half hour ago, I got a news release on my phone that the counties of Jefferson and Custer County in Idaho lifted their mask mandates today. Bottomville County is on track to do that Monday. It's time we ended our mandate, so I move this council rescind ordinance number 3061, pass the mandate fast, face masks in Pocatello.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson.
I have a question.
Councilman Bray?
If we fail to rescind this ordinance, does it stay in place?
Yes.
Okay, so we only need one vote. If this goes down, we've affirmed we're going to do it. Continue it.
If, if, well, this, tonight was for us to have the discussion whether or not to do this, and so if this fails, then the, the vote will continue to, the ordinance will continue to be on the books until the council votes to rescind it.
Okay, then I want to, I want to speak, I'm not going to vote to take this off the table right now. There are too many variables out there. We know that Idaho is way behind the times in terms of how fast other things get here. There's, there are several variables of this disease. I have a feeling that had we put this ordinance in place when we should have, we could have curtailed the peaking that we had. I just think we're a little bit too soon to do this. I, I think that there are, I think there are some ways we can maybe tamper with this ordinance a little bit, but I don't, I just think that our signal needs to be one that still this is a disease that is spread in our community, and that people are vulnerable to this disease, and we're going to stand behind doing whatever it takes to prevent the spread.
Councilwoman Lurik?
I agree with that. I think we need to stay the course a little bit longer. Our numbers are coming down, and I'm very pleased to see that. In my experience in town, I've kind of noticed the opposite of what councilmember Cheatham was saying. I am seeing very high compliance in the city, in all the businesses I go in, and people are no longer seeming to be very upset about it or having an issue with it. I think they've sort of grown accustomed to it. And I just think if we remove it prematurely, that we're going to see a spike again, and I just would hate to see that. I think we need to stay the course. And I will add, every time we've had this ordinance come up for reconsideration, we've requested comments from, you know, the hospital, from Southeast Idaho Public Health, from our Chamber of Commerce, from various different entities that are, you know, on the front lines of dealing with this. And the response that we've gotten from them, particularly this time, was even stronger about keeping this in place. Even our Chamber of Commerce was saying that they support keeping it in place and that they're not seeing objections and that businesses are complying and that this has now become, you know, normal, and people don't have a big problem with it. Our hospital, you mentioned that the occupancy rate is no longer a problem, and that's true, but the medical experts, including the hospital management, is asking us to keep this in place. So I think they're the people that we need to listen to, Southeast Idaho Public Health, the CEO of our hospital, you know, the CEO of our chamber. These are people that I think we need to listen to, and we need to just go a little bit longer. The vaccine is coming out. People are getting it. I agree with you, Rick. COVID is kind of here to stay. I don't think it's going to go away even once most of us become vaccinated, but I still think we're, we're very vulnerable, and we need to make sure that we do everything we can, and wearing masks is a, is a small thing that we can do to help protect people, so I will vote to, or not vote to rescind it at this point.
Councilwoman Stevens?
I just wanted to remind us that when I wear a mask, I protect myself a little bit, but in fact, the major reason for me to wear a mask is to provide protection to others. So I'm just pointing that out to remind us.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? So I would just might let the count, this is not typical, and I'll probably never do this again, but I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven citizens in there, in the room with us tonight. I don't know if all of them are against the ordinance or not, but how many are against it? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. We've got six of the seven that are against the ordinance, and so just so the council knows what we've got here. With that, we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
No.
Lurik?
No.
Ortega? Ortega?
I'm thinking. Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Super. Thank you very much. Thank you, council. This is, this is an interesting thing, and I agree with everything that's been being said tonight. We have a number of people that have continued to wear a mask. I think our numbers are going down, and I think our numbers are going down for a reason. I think the mask ordinance has worked and has been working. I, I've got mixed feelings on this. I know the, the, the hospital has asked us, Chamber of Commerce has asked us, the, the professionals have asked us to keep a mandate going forward. I've taken a lot of thought about this and quite frankly, lost a lot of sleep in the last couple of nights on what we would do tonight, whether or not to rescind this or not. We do have a lot of people that are in favor of it and a lot of people that are not in favor of it. And so it's been interesting. It's that way throughout the country, so. My goodness. I'm with, I'm with councilwoman Ortega. I'm thinking about this. This is, it's a hard decision. I think we have people that are complying, and I think people are used to wearing a mask. And I think that as we continue to encourage people to wear a mask, I think we need to continue to wear masks, and I think we need to always, always just keep that in mind. I'm interested in knowing what this looks like. Our numbers have dropped, and I know that I'm going to make some enemies probably tonight, however, either way you go, you're going to make enemies, and so the community is split in half. I think I'm going to continue to encourage people to wear a mask and encourage people to wear that. I will continue to encourage people to get vaccinated when they have the opportunity to do so. With that, I think I will vote yes on this with the idea that we will continue to encourage to wear a mask in doing so. So, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
There's some clarification that needs to take place at this point.
Okay.
There has now been four votes to rescind the ordinance and three votes not to rescind the ordinance. The only way to affect an ordinance is by ordinance, and that is not what's on tonight's agenda. Tonight on the agenda is a discussion about the ordinance. It's clear now that the council's direction is to rescind the ordinance, but that needs to happen by ordinance. And so now what needs to happen is a discussion about how council would like that to happen and when they would like that to happen.
Okay.
This vote does not repeal the ordinance by itself, because that's not how you affect ordinances. That's how serious ordinances are. So that is the next step that the council needs to discuss.
So with that, council, what I'm understanding is we need to have a discussion of of a new ordinance, and we need to remind everybody that this ordinance is still in full effect.
Until such time that the council...
Until such time, there's a new ordinance that has been placed on the agenda to rescind the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. So I turn it over to you, council. Councilmember Cheatham.
Mr. Attorney, could you please outline for us what our options are at this point?
So as we discussed in November, when this ordinance was passed, it can only be affected in any way, whether it be expanded, the change, the fine is changed, the exceptions added to or subtracted from. That can only be done by ordinance. So because the intent of the council is to repeal this ordinance as it currently is on the books, you can do that at your next regular city council meeting, which isn't until February 18th. Or you can do that at a properly noticed and agendized council meeting prior to February 18th. But until that happens, this ordinance is technically on the books in the City of Pocatello.
Council, I would remind you, we need to give the legal department the time to draft an ordinance. And so the earliest, at the earliest point at this time, I would say would be the 18th to be able to see this and read this.
We could certainly have, yes, that's correct. But we could certainly have something drafted sooner than the 18th, but you still have all the noticing requirements and everything else. And it's always been the practice of the city council of the City of Pocatello to handle ordinances at regular city council meetings. And that's what we talked about in November, that these directional discussions would still have that two-week lag.
Does the 18th give you and the publication notices and all the legals time to get it done, Jared?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we do so.
So...
What do we might do so? Instruct staff to bring forward the new ordinance that will repeal this.
Forward on the 18th of February for final passage.
Second.
Who is that second, Adamson? Okay. All right, so as a reminder, the mask ordinance is in full effect until at least the 18th. And if that ordinance does not pass on the 18th, then this will be the remaining law.
Yeah, the only way to affect the ordinance in place now would be passage of that repeal ordinance, which I will have prepared and presented to council on the 18th.
Okay.
If this motion passes.
Okay. So council, we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Um, no.
Ortega?
I'm not, I'm not sure what I'm voting on, to be honest.
Yeah, I was a little confused, too.
I'm confused. What am I voting for? To have it on the 18th agenda?
Yes.
Okay, then yes. Okay, thank you.
And Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, council. Then we'll have our attorneys craft an ordinance prepared for the 18th. And as a reminder to the public and everybody that this is in full force effect, at least until that date as it is. As a reminder, though, I will let everybody know as a reminder, this will not remove a mask requirement in any businesses that they wish to mandate a mask. In any city properties, we'll still have the requirement to have a mask on as well until we withdraw that. Okay, thank you. Then we'll move to agenda item 12, item from the audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be heard at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a total of 15 minutes for this agenda item and three minutes per person. We have one person, Heather Dusselkun.
Heather Dusselkun, 635 Gary Street, Pocatello. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Mr. Kruger, welcome to Pocatello. I was listening to the two o'clock meeting today, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to come here and speak to you as in person as I could to let you know that the reason behind this data book that we dropped off for you guys last week. You know, Lydia and I spent time talking about how can we contribute? You know, we want to be part of the solution and just not be noisy gongs to you. And so we decided to take what we felt were our strengths and our skills and put ourselves into your shoes and say, okay, what, if we were in your shoes and having to make these decisions, what would be relevant to you? What would be useful to you? And so that's really the reason behind this. This is our gift to you, to the mayor, to the council members. We felt it would be useful to you to have something at your fingertips that you could go to for data. It's not an all-inclusive thing. It's just, it's a supplement, you can add to it. And I just really wanted to assure you that all the data that we put in here came from reliable sources. It came from places like U.S. Census Bureau, Department of Labor, all of that. And all we did was to take, because there's volumes and volumes of data out there. And we tried to pick and choose what we thought would be most relevant and useful to you in your decision-making process. And to take that and funnel it down to some easy, to look at information. And you know, I'll give you an example. One of the sections we included in there was on crime. And I found out, didn't know this, Idaho State Police has a wonderful database available to the public on that. But for you to be able to look at the one sheet we provided in there, which is the top 10 cities, and to compare the items that we included in there, and there's even more breakdowns on what we included, would have required you to download 10 separate city sheets and then spread them out and look at it one by one. We took that and consolidated it all together for you to save you time, because we understand that you are part-time, part-time council members. In relation to the employee data, that's a little bit more subjective. I get that. You know, if I had to describe our methodology, it's common sense. We know that some of the cities don't compare city to city. So like, some cities had IT people and police, library, municipal. We took all those and we put them into one department. That's what we did when we normalized. I would just encourage you, if you have any questions, please contact us. You have our contact phone numbers. I will tell you that Section D, the information from the assessor's office, there are some problems with it. We knew that. It was our judgment called to include it. We've been trying for three weeks to get clarification from them on that. But we felt it was important that you at least have a snapshot of that, even if it's a little blurry at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, council, thank you. Thank you for your work this afternoon and everything. We appreciate your time. And with that, we are adjourned.